Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Could I have the roll call, please?
Eric Alderete. Phil Becerra.
Present.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner.
Here.
Sean Mill.
Here.
Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Lynette Verino.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Commissioner McLaughlin to the crew up here.
Thank you.
Our first item is public comments not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience have any comments regarding non-agendaized items? Seeing none? Okay, move on. First order of business is a consent calendar. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January 11th? Commissioner Becerra.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and pull the minutes from the consent calendar. I just wanted to make a motion to approve them with one amendment.
Sure.
And it's just that in my planning commissioner comments from the last meeting, I'd requested, not suggested, that staff include a list in our agenda packets of projects that will eventually come to the Planning Commission whose applications have been deemed complete, and that the list would be similar to that of what I showed for the city of Huntington Beach. That's my motion.
So you're gonna, that's your motion with an amendment?
That's my amendment, correct.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with...
I need to abstain because I wasn't...
Oh, and we have a one abstention with remaining commissioners voting yes, and Commissioner Alderete is absent.
Thank you. No problem. I got the eye from the lawyer.
Item number one is Site Plan Review Number 2016-01. In candida, you wish to start the conversation on that?
Yes, we do have a staff report if you are interested in it, but we had several questions on this item, how it was going to be accommodated in the, why it was coming before you, what the parameters were of it. This is a new kind of review for all of us. It's an application in the Harbor Transit Corridor specific plan. And in an effort to streamline the development process, we created a process that would not require a public hearing per se, but when it got to a higher, when buildings got larger, taller height than three stories, they would have to bring the site plan before you for consideration and review. It's, although it is not a public hearing process. There was a Sunshine Ordinance meeting on this project, and the, excuse me, the people that attended that meeting were generally in support of the project. And if you would like to hear the staff presentation on that item, we're ready to prepare that, present that for you.
And before we do so, I'd like to get any commissioner disclosures of any of the agendaized items. Commissioner Bauer.
I met with Davin Gum, the owner of the property underlying the Knife and Fork Restaurant.
Commissioner Becerra.
Mr. Chair, I also met with Davin Gum for Knife and Fork earlier this month.
Any other disclosures and... Great. I'd like to let the public know if they wish to address the Planning Commission. Please file a request to speak for them with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. The action of the Planning Commission is final. Following consent to the City Council, unless allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the City Council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the Planning Commission within ten days from the date of the commission's action or unless set for a public hearing at the City Council. So staff is going to present on this first item then?
If you would like to hear a staff presentation, we are ready to give that before you.
I would think so, yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is for Site Plan Review Number 2016-01 for the line. This is a mixed-use development that they proposed to construct 228 units that'll be for rent. There also is going to be 4,248 square feet of commercial and retail structures up towards the front facing Westminster. The harbor-specific plan does require an approval of Site Plan Review anytime it's over three stories. And that was a precaution that was built in the zoning code because there had been some folks, not in this area, but along Harbor, that were concerned about larger, taller buildings. But there were no concerns brought up at the Sunshine Meeting regarding this project. This is a 3.91 acre site. It's in the transit node in that Harbor corridor mixed-use transit plan. If you notice to the north, there's some commercials, it's a gas station, Circle K, and then there's some residential as well. There's residential uses and the Pacific Electric right-of-way to the immediate right or east of this particular project, and it's commercial to the west. Here is a site photo. It's a completely vacant property. It had been used in the past for dumping grounds and for car storage, and it really is not in very good shape. The site plan proposed is an excellent site plan. It's proposing a large number of amenities, in fact, over 81% more open space than is required by the code, which is very unusual, but it provides a very nice amenity for potential new residents. It has a fitness center and a club room up towards the... If you look in the upper left, that's Westminster on the left-hand side. And then there is, it says in the staff report that it's three buildings. It's actually one building that's connected by corridors for where the residential is on the lower right-hand side. And then there is a six-story parking structure right in the center of the project. Here are north and south elevations. It's a California vernacular style of architecture. It's got some nice cornice lines and a variety of different fenestration treatments, very earthy materials that fits in well with Santa Ana. And it's got plenty of articulation. This is the side on the east that faces the residences. It's got the parking structure there directly in the center. And you could see they've done some nice metalwork to try to make it more decorative and to alleviate blank walls. Here's the west elevation, so you're looking at the commercial component at the left-hand side. And these are the proposed amenities. You could see all the areas that are highlighted in the pink are open space areas with courtyards, pools, barbecue areas, foosball tables and such. So it's quite a large amount of open space for this project. Also surrounding the entire site, you see the gray area there that is also open space that could be used as a jogging trail or a dog run or shuffleboard. So altogether in amenities, they're proposing four courtyards as well as a roof deck that will have, for private parties or for different events that the place may hold. There's the jogging trail and dog run, a swimming, a very large swimming pool, fitness room, club room, a public plaza, which will have public art at the front of it, which really remains a strong focal point for Westminster, for Westminster Avenue. It's, that's really, that public area there is what really what creates it to make it a magnet to the eye, to make you want to come to shop there. There's also going to be bicycle and electric vehicle parking in the parking structure. Each unit will have their own washers and dryers. The reason this particular parcel is so well-suited to this particular kind of project is because in the transit, in this harbor-specific plan area, there is a mobility chapter. Mobility chapter really focuses on making people healthy by alternative methods of travel and making it easier for people to get around. So in this area and this intersection, we have the fixed guideway, which will eventually be coming along the Pacific Electric railway that you see on the right-hand side. You also notice there's proposed Class II bike lanes all along Westminster as well as up and down Harbor. And there, further, there is a proposed main transit stop for the OCTA bus route at the intersection of Harbor and Westminster. So all of this converges to make it very easy for people to live and work and play and get to work in other places, making a very livable community. Mixed use in this particular area is permitted by right. This, the site plan and the entire buildings all meet the code requirements. It does require Site Plan Review approval because it is over three stories in height. And basically, we believe that this project, to develop this vacant site, really contributes to the success of this particular specific plan area as a transit corridor. And if you do have questions, I'm available to answer them. We did have the Sunshine Meeting in November, and they, as Candida had mentioned, they were all very much in support of this project. I also have the applicant here today, so if you would like to ask them questions, they are prepared to answer as well. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from staff or... Holly?
Yes, real quick.
Commissioner Mill.
Eddie, real quick question. I noticed there's a mention of the public art plan. And I know that Commissioner Becerra and I would talk about this in regards to the Lion Project. We kind of got bamboozled there. So can we make sure we get some kind of wording in here? Because I think last time we got, the wording wasn't correct, and Lion used a little legal, to get out of actually bringing the public art before. So help me understand, is this, they just have to come and they can put a wave there or something, or can we put as a condition of approval that we kind of can have some kind of input? Maybe...
The harbor-specific plan does not, does the harbor-specific plan specifically require the Planning Commission approval for the...
No, it does not.
You know, that would be, at this point, I would say that we are going to come up with a public art chapter process, and I think that's the time to really address that, to try to go back and claw back things that have slipped away, I would say. Leave it as it is. I think that at this point, all we need to do is identify the public art site. But the public art itself is not under any kind of review. If we wanted to do that, we would have to go back and amend the code at this point. I would think that that would be just beyond the purview of our authority or the Planning Commission's authority to make the public art subject to review and approval of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We will be adding a condition, however, that was recommended by Public Works, which is related to the trash and staging areas. So you do have that available at your desk. Did you wish to speak with the applicant, or you have no more comments?
Well, we have some other questions. Commissioner Bauer?
Holly, where's the, is there a stop on the, I forget what they call the trolley? Where's the nearest stop to this project? Where would it be? Do we know?
It is actually proposed right where you see it, the arrow ending on the Pacific Electric Railway, right there, is the stop. So it's right at the retail plaza of this particular project.
Okay, so do, I mean, do we know, I mean, I presume because it's going to be stopped, there'll be some infrastructure for that stop?
There will be right, in the right-of-way, though.
It'll be located within the right, okay. And then are there any concerns that we might have regarding noise amelioration or noise problems associated with the rail? I know it's supposed to be on tire, run on tires, right? Did I understand it?
That's a separate process from this particular project, so I don't have information.
Actually, that was brought up during the, during discussions regarding this project, and the responsibilities for any retrofitting in terms of impacts, the impacts will be on the new project, which is the rail project. And so responsibility for any retrofitting of the building will be on the rail authority, the transit authority.
So we're going to put that on the county level?
That...
Instead of we have it before planning right now and not address that issue at this point?
Commissioner Bauer, I think, I think from what I see on the site plan, it looks like a big chunk of the, let's call it the eastern frontage, or the frontage closest to the right-of-way is the parking structure. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
So I mean, other than any cars that might be offended, I think we're pretty good.
Do you have an elevation that you can show?
This is the one that would be facing the railway.
So we have some townhomes, or, I'm sorry, apartments facing right-of-way?
All the way on the left-hand side, which is to the south, there are some. But again, the, there wouldn't be a nexus between sound attenuation for this private developer. The nexus was really going to be on the, on the transit authority when they construct the actual right-of-way for the train.
Well, if I may, I mean, that concerns me. I don't, I don't know why we don't address, I mean, obviously, or if there's a parking structure next to the line that isn't this...
I think we might, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think we might, we're assuming that the fixed transit that we're talking about is going to make noise. Those trolleys are often very quiet, and then they only make noises at certain intersections as an alert system. At the time that they build that, we will, we have to inform the Public Works Department of the issues that we can, we're concerned about regarding the closeness of the transit to apartment buildings. At the same time, the buildings that we're seeing are going to be constructed with oftentimes double-pane windows to meet our own noise element requirements, that they need to keep the noise below a certain decibel at the, within the, in each unit. And we think that the already existing building code requirements for those can mitigate the type of noise that may be associated, if any, really, quite frankly, if any, associated with the transit.
I might add also that this is a major intersection at Harbor and Westminster, so the ambient level of noise already is greater than you would find in a typical single-family neighborhood. So it is appropriate for multifamily.
Okay. And are there any factors taken into consideration? I mean, do we have any extenuating circumstances? Because it's located next to the transit line, that would provide for like extra bicycle storage and that sort of thing? We're encouraging people to utilize the line. Have we considered that, or...
Yes, we do have bicycle storage and electric vehicle parking inside the parking garage. And it's also set up to be very pedestrian-friendly. There will be bike lanes in the area to serve people who want to take multimodal various types of transportation.
Okay. I mean, my concern here, obviously, is, I think this is the first project I've seen that's, looks like it's adjacent to the new line. And so going forward, I obviously want those issues and that concern factored into any of the projects, but it sounds like you've taken a look at that, so...
Right. It does make a big difference if the railway was there now versus that it's going to be built sometime in the future. It's hard to make that legal connection to this particular developer if it's not constructed as of now.
I'm not sure I follow that. I mean, I think we were anticipating that the developer, obviously, is getting the benefit of it, and they're obviously developing this with the mindset, and will profit with the line in mind. I don't understand why we couldn't...
If I may, Mr. Chair, if I may, explain what Holly is trying to explain, is that to the extent that we impose another layer of protection to a developer, the nexus for us, and this is, I'm trying to explain what Holly just explained, the nexus that we have to impose additional conditions have to be done in association with the impacts that the development project is having, not vice versa. In other words, if the development project itself is causing something, an impact on these neighboring areas, that is when we, or on the residence of the project itself, that's when we actually go to step forward and ask for additional conditions. And in this case, the question is whether or not it's appropriate to ask for a condition in anticipation of an impact that's external to the project and not caused by the project, which would then be an additional cost to the project developer to prevent any kind of potential sound and noise impacts in the future, should they ever happen. I don't think we have that nexus, and that is what I think Holly is trying to say. This project is not causing that. Therefore, we can't ask this project to mitigate those impacts.
But surely we have the right, and we should as a planning body, that's the whole goal of planning, is it not? And to anticipate what's coming forward. And if we can ameliorate and address that problem beforehand with some foresight, we don't have that problem down the road. And I don't want to see it shifted on to, what I heard with the noise attenuation was that it would be shifted on to the taxpayers. And if we can address it in the planning process beforehand, I think that's prudent and wise to do so.
If I can add to what Commissioner Bauer's saying is, if this project is located next to a freeway, we have a noise ordinance in the city, and our noise ordinance would provide that, the development, provide a certain decibel level within the development, right?
Right.
So, but I, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying is that because we don't have a train running down the path, there's nothing to mitigate.
There's nothing to mitigate.
And then, then let me just add on to that. When in our process here in the city of Santa Ana do we require some sort of acoustic study? Is that during construction-level drawings, or are we talking...
Only, only when an acoustic study is warranted. And for example, if the project itself is in a particular location and that where acoustics become an issue, otherwise, otherwise we have the different parts of the municipal ordinance that actually regulate everything, including noise generation. We just rely on the specific standards of the building code, and that is the process through which the applicants deal with these issues through the building permit process after they get their entitlement from us, that we implement the limits and the standards of the building code and the noise element at that level. It is really not our responsibility, nor should it be, that we try to troubleshoot every possible thing that might happen in the future, to the extent we can from the architectural and design and planning standpoint. However, we're stepping into an area that is really well-regulated by the building code and through the building code process, and I think we may be overexerting ourselves by looking too much into this. The building code addresses this.
Another, perhaps, this may help as well. This area, in addition to what your question was whether or not, or your statement was whether or not we had mitigations, we do, we did look at noise in the harbor-specific plan. This particular entitlement is part of that, and the impacts were addressed in that specific plan. And so there are mitigations related to any impacts that would have occurred related to noise. And that, that plan did anticipate the development of the rail?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I certainly, I understand what you're saying, Hassan, in terms of the building code, but I think that the rail will present new and unique problems, and I think that we need to be proactive in terms of anticipating those problems and addressing those where we can.
I do not actually dispute that one bit. And I really do think, as the planning managers pointed out, the time for us really to address those things is at the time we adopt new policies and new documents and put in the mitigation measures in those documents so that the applicants have a certain level of predictability. One of the things we're trying to do here is to avoid coming up with that, things that may or may not happen that have not been, may or may not have been addressed in our documents. It is really the responsibility of the Planning Division to make sure our documents sufficiently address those things. And we assume that the harbor-specific plan, having been adopted as late as it was, has taken all of these things into account. And to, to hold up one application in the process when they have followed everything according to the harbor-specific plan, it would become, it may not be exactly the best place to do that, and we could have a conversation about how to potentially address these things because we are developing transit-oriented development standards along this guided way. And we're going to address those within our own documents, and I think that would be the appropriate thing.
Okay. That's good. Great. Thank you very much.
Well, actually, I have one last question.
Commissioner Becerra.
So as far as these projects coming through, whether it's Harbor Corridor or just in general, are we, as a city, encouraging them to develop LEED certification or LEED standards?
We have nothing in any of our zoning documents that make that a requirement. We, of course, can encourage, but...
That's what I was asking is, I understand it's not a requirement at this point, but is it a policy that we, or just do we encourage them to go that direction?
The policy that you're asking, we are going to actually present policies for your discussion in the general plan and the zoning code updates in other cities. What we did, we created incentives for people that meet certain standards of LEED. You must know that the Cal Green building code standards currently are almost more or less commensurate with LEED Silver standards. So if we want to achieve anything higher than LEED Silver, the best way to present that would be through incentives, and that's something we could discuss as part of the general plan and zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from commissioners for staff? Okay. Have we received any written communication on this item?
No, none received.
We haven't?
No.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Oh, okay, because that's your point. We're just hearing it for, okay. I retract that statement. So we won't have any action on it? It's information only? So there's action, but not public action? How about the applicant? We want to speak with the applicant? Yes. Is the applicant here and like to speak on this?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Darrell Sekaro with LaTerra Development, and we're extremely excited to bring this project before you this evening. We've been working really hard with staff over the past, just over a year now, I think. And first, I would like to say, thank the staff, who've been really incredible. I know this is kind of a new process for the city, and I guess we're all sort of on part of the learning curve with the specific plan. But we're excited about the project, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Becerra.
Well, first, I'm excited to see the project here. It looks great, so definitely, yeah, excited. Just a couple of questions. So I like some of the amenities that you show in your plans. The outdoor theater.
Yes.
So just out of curiosity, from a, from the standpoint that, is it something that's going to project onto the wall? Is it a screen, like an LED screen? Like, how is it going to be?
It's actually projected off the wall, yes.
Okay. And as far as from a noise standpoint, because we do have single-family homes immediately to the east of the project site.
Yes.
Is it buffered?
It is. It's interior to the project, so it doesn't really affect the neighboring single-family community.
And then, I mean, so if I'm sitting in this outdoor theater, you know, obviously, I'd want to hear the movie. Is it going to impact those that are inside the development? Other apartments and whatnot?
No, it's, and I guess, I guess theater may be a stretch of the word. I mean, it is really, you'd have to be really close to be able to hear. I'm sure if you, depending on the noise level, it mean, you'd probably hear it if you were probably on a, maybe if you're close by outside on your, on your private balcony, perhaps. But it would never be amplified to a level to where it would be disruptive to the whole community.
Well, I mean, you're in the business of renting these things out, so I'm sure you're not going to put necessities in your foresight. So I was just curious as to how it worked. And then the Sky Lounge, is that something that, is that like a space for someone in the development to use, like kind of like a community-type thing? Or is that going to be run by an outside operator?
No, all of the amenities are strictly for the members of the community who live there, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So now I can bring this back for discussion amongst commissioners, and there's a recommended action. Commissioner Mill.
I would like to recommend that we adopt Resolution Improving Site Plan Review 2016-01 as condition.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Verino? Motion by Commissioner Mill, second by Commissioner Verino. Sorry, Phil didn't get to you quick enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commission, the motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderete absent. Now we'll move on to the public hearing item. Item number two, public hearing item conditional use... Item number two, public hearing item, conditional use permit number 2015-19. Holly.
Thank you, Chairman Gartner. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for discussion tonight is conditional use permit number 2015-19 for the property located at 601 East Santa Ana Boulevard, Unit A, for the project known as Knife and Glass. This project was brought to you, brought before you on December 14th of last year, and this is a re-review of the project following a approximately 30-day continuance. The project proposes to sell beer and wine at a new restaurant, proposing to locate at The Roost, which is a mixed-use development, and this application requires a conditional use permit to allow a type 41 ABC license. The noticing that went out for this project originally noted a type 47, which would have permitted the sale of distilled spirits as well. However, following a community meeting that was held on January 11th, the application was revised to only include beer and wine, and I'll provide additional details on that later in this presentation. The site is located at the corner of Santa Ana Boulevard and Minter, and is surrounded by various residential and religious land uses. This is the site plan, as you've previously seen. It occupies a small corner of the larger development known as The Roost, and proposes to contain a variety of outdoor seating, as well as other seating next to the food service and alcohol service areas. The site photo shows as the site appears today. You can see some of the kitchen facilities using a recycled shipping container at left, and the outdoor primary seating area in the center of the photograph. So, following a Planning Commission hearing on December 14th, the project was continued for about 30 days to allow the applicant time to meet with the community and discuss several concerns and ideas, and to just share more information about the project site, as well as what the restaurant concept would entail. The meeting was held in the evening on January 11th. The applicant, members of the community, and staff were present to hear questions, concerns, and ideas about the project. The project was described to the community, and some concerns were raised about overall neighborhood safety, as well as the kind of operational standards of this particular project. Following the meeting, the members of the community were invited to tour the project site afterwards, get a better sense of the kitchen facilities, the outdoor dining area, and to just get a better grasp of kind of the size and scale of the project. At that community discussion, the applicant shared that this was an application mostly to sell beer and wine in conjunction with a new restaurant, that it genuinely is a restaurant with ancillary alcohol sales, as is described by the staff report in the application. And following the meeting, and kind of some of the concerns that were shared by the community, the community organization held a community vote, and the outcome was to support the application with moving forward after having addressed some of the questions and providing more information about it. So, following the meeting, staff contacted the applicant to revise the application to a type 41, which better reflects the application that is before you today. Following these, the site still meets all the standards that are required in order for a location to be able to sell beer and wine, and based on this analysis, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2015-19. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Holly? Commissioner Verino.
Just so I can make sure I understand, so originally, they were applying for a type 47?
Originally, the applicant had intended for a type 41 all along. The project was brought before the commission originally as a 47 in order to allow some flexibility if the location and the business ever evolved to include distilled spirits. However, the revision is in order to better accurately describe the project that is really before the commission today.
So, before us today is just beer and wine?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I do have some speaker cards, so I'm going to open it up to the public hearing. Debbie McEwen.
Good evening. You know, I'm, I'm happy to hear that it will go forward with the wine and alcohol, or the wine and beer. My concerns, well, I have to say, my neighborhood is about two blocks to the north, and we were delighted to hear that there's going to be something that we could sort of call our own. It's close enough, it's walking distance, and it was a pretty exciting thing. It never really occurred to any of us that there would be this opposition, very surprised at that. So, we, we missed the first round. We're sorry, we weren't here to support them at round one, but we're here now. As I look at this big picture, one of the things I want to remind you, you guys might remember, back in the day, when Shelley's Bistro was, is going to be the first, really the first of the Renaissance on Fourth Street, they were going to move their outdoor dining onto the corner, and of course, they had their alcohol licenses, whatever number it was. And as I said, the folks from Latino Health Access battled that like no other. They knew the sky would fall if, in fact, people were seen sitting outside at a bistro and having a cocktail. Well, you know, that didn't happen. The sky didn't fall, and great things happened downtown. So, you know, channeling carry nation in that time that, that really didn't work in our society. I realize not every single new business out there might be the right one to have these liquor licenses, but I think with good planning, proper conditioning, and all parties doing their part, there's no problem with serving alcohol, and we can't yield every time someone cries out that somehow that society will collapse if, in fact, they get an alcohol license. It's just really onerous. We shouldn't be carrying that, we shouldn't be carrying that load. That's not, I don't think that that's the right thing to do. But again, I'm glad that this is going to go forward, and our neighborhood is really excited. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another speaker card for Venacio Chavez. Did I get it right?
English is not my first language, so don't blame me. Blame Google Translate, okay? My name is Venacio Chavez, and I'm living on 408 East Civic Center Drive, apartment 115. I have a meeting on January 11th with, with one of the owners and also with some city officials about this permit. Also, it was a scout tuner with us, and we discussed the, the type of restaurant it will be. The, our concern is because we are most habitational zone, and also, we have many churches around, but they explained that they think it will not be a negative impact. So, we will not oppose to this project. We will keep vigilant to see if any problem come to our community, and if that happen, we will organize as a community, and we will ask for remove the license. I'm also, I will draw the opposition with ABC, so go forward, and then, we hope we could have a good environment over there and see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker card for Marco Pello.
Good evening. We attended the meeting last January 11th, and then, I was kind of happy with you guys because the way that the things, they were treated here. So, we are not opposed to make business in Sarana. We want the best for Sarana, like probably you. But you know, first of all, thank you for your, the night that day, because give us the opportunity to know more about the project. So, was, was the biggest issue, because we didn't know about the project. So, these people came over, we had a meeting, and everybody was kind of happy. We both yes to, to go forward, but one of the things that really attracted my attention was one of you guys, when we came to the meeting, I don't know, to me, it sounds like was a conflict of interest, when you, especially you, Mr. Verino, you were talking with the people behind our, behind, by the seats area. And then, there is nothing wrong, but I think it's not professional when we bring something to the table, and we need to talk, we need to talk with no limits, without everything, interests in between. We came, we talked, and then, one other thing that I noticed that day, when you say, we need to be the best thing for Sarana, I agree with you, but I told you that day that the best things not always work for Sarana. We try to be a safe and nice neighborhood. So, probably you are the same page, but that day, it wasn't the day when you told, when you told us that, and we try to do the best for Sarana. Yeah, that's right, but I told you, not, not always the best ideas are the best for, for our communities. So, one of the things that I really want to approach to you is, we're going to try to, to make a committee in my neighborhood to keep an eye on you guys, because we really need to have that, because it's one way, that's the only way that we can communicate, because in that way, it's not going to happen like with this restaurant. I'm, I'm happy for these people who's going to make business, because there is no, nothing wrong with that, and we, we're going to support them. Probably, we will be, we will be their customers, too.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Chavez.
My name's Carmen Chavez. I actually partially grew, actually, I grew up in Santa Ana. I partially lived at 408 East Civic Center, and I moved actually into the new complex at Triata Garden at 650 North Lacy Street. I'm also joined them in the meeting of January 11th. As for, we just wanted to be there, I wanted to be there to find out what exactly was this restaurant about. The same problem that happened with this project was, we were misinformed, and that's unfortunately, whoever's in charge of communicating with the community should take that in the first step and be like, hey, would you be interested in having something like this around your community? When we first heard about it, we thought it was going to be a bar, and unfortunately, that's not the truth, and unfortunately, the people from Knife and Glass had to suffer that, because we, we stopped it, because we didn't know what was happening. And we were glad that they came to this meeting and informed us, and we were very happy to find out that it's going to be an awesome place to go and enjoy, have a lunch with your families and friends. Our concern that I did bring to the table, that even though alcohol is still going to be served, is I have a family, majority of the people around us have kids. There is two elementary schools, there's literally a church across the street. I've counted all the churches around that one area within a mile. There's roughly seven-plus churches there. We don't oppose the project, like I said, we're happy for our community to have a place to go. Our concern is making those streets safe. Santa Ana Boulevard, unfortunately, it's like trying to run for your life, trying to cross those streets. There's horrible lighting. Trying to turn to the right, to the left on any of those corners on Santa Ana Boulevard and Civic Center and Lacy are very dangerous, due to the fact that people are parking on those corners that are not marked with red, or in general, Mr. Scott actually took a picture of it and saw, I walked into the sign that says, "Parking starts here," and it was blocked by a tree, so people couldn't see that they weren't supposed to park there. So, those conflicts were brought up, because since we're going to have a restaurant now, people are going to try to find parking around the streets, due to the fact that we did see that the parking kind of seems too small. So, we know that people from the restaurants are going to park on the streets, so we were just scared at the fact that there's going to bring more traffic to that street, so we wanted it to, to just make it safer for our families and kids crossing the street, like I said, due to the fact that there's a elementary school two blocks from there. So, those were just topics that we brought up in that meeting, and like I said, we did not oppose to having this restaurant open. We just want to bring those projects up to making those streets safe, due to the fact that there's a possibility that there's a driver under an influence of alcohol, and we just want to make sure that we lighten that street up for our kids to be safe to cross, maybe put some blinker lights on the floor. I mean, just stuff like that, that we, we talked about, and just keeping an eye on those corners for our kids. So, and like I said, if there's any unfortunate, any conflicts that starts up because of this alcohol and more traffic incidents and stuff like that, it's something that we are going to bring back to talk about for sure. And thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any other people that wish to speak on this particular item that may have not filled out a speaker card? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for motion discussion, both. I'd like to have a little discussion on it, but go ahead. Commissioner Verino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's great to, to see what, what's happened, and since the last time this came before us, it's great that there was a dialogue between the nearby residents and this business, and I think that's something that, you know, we should see more of. But I want to do, I want to address a particular comment that was directed specifically at me, which was that it seemed inappropriate for me to talk to the person that, who is not here this evening, but that had been, I believe, affiliated or associated with the application for this particular application. I've known that gentleman for years. He's a friend of mine, so there's nothing inappropriate with talking to your friends. And the thing that was funny is I was giving him a little grief, because I said, oh, you didn't even tell me you're going to be coming to the Planning Commission. So, that's what we were talking about. So, there was nothing discussed about the project before the meeting, or immediately before the meeting, just so that we can be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mill asked me, and then Commissioner Verino, you asked.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to commend the applicant for going out and meeting with the folks in the community. I, I think that was our main concern. I, I think if this project had been in Floral Park or, or other neighborhoods, without any doubt, the applicant would have gone out and presented their plan to the, to the community to let them know. And it just, it shows a sign of, of respect to reach out to the, to the people in the community. You're becoming a part of their community, you're moving into their neighborhood, and as a sign of respect, go out and speak with them, as you would pretty much any other neighborhood in the city. That didn't happen the first time, and as you see, when, when the communication, the lines of communication opened up, you have the folks down here, last time they were here telling us they don't want it. Today, they're here to say that they're, they're excited about it coming. So, I'm very happy that that happened. So, all in all, I would think that the continuance was a major success, to, to put it off for 30 days and have these folks get together, go out and, and break bread and, and talk about what's going on. It was a win-win for not only the applicant, but for the community. And I believe that now, I think the, the community now sees the applicant as, as one of them, he's part of their community, they're going to be more vigilant in looking out for this business, because now they know there's a relationship there. And I think that had we just gone ahead and moved this forward at the last meeting, there would have been some, some ill feelings there. I think the continuance got rid of those, and as a result, the community would be better served for that, so that's why I have Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Verino.
Thank you. I, I, the only reason that I didn't vote the last time for the project was, was for the sole purpose that I felt that the neighborhood was not heard, and when they brought a petition with close to 500 signatures, I think it's our responsibility to, to listen and address those concerns. And we would do that for any group, in, in, whether it's someone from a neighborhood association, or someone that's representing any, any, any part of the community in City of Santa Ana. That's, that's what we're up here to do, is, is represent everyone. I'm, I'm extremely happy that the applicant, to know that the applicant not only had a meeting, but brought people into the restaurant, walked them around, gave them a tour, that, that, to me, just shows a real huge effort and willingness to be a part of the community, so I applaud him for doing that. I also applaud the community members that, the last speaker, Carmen, that you said that you guys are now looking at, you know, other things that are more safety-oriented. How do we, you know, parking situations, blind spots on the street, do we need to have, slow traffic down? Do we need lights? And I don't think, I think those are things that, as a city, we should be concerned about as well. I mean, safety, number one. I don't, you know, I don't think that this restaurant's going to cause that, it's probably already happening. So, I, thank you, Scott, for going out and taking pictures and, and listening. So I, thank you, Scott, for going out and taking pictures and listening, and, you know, and I think that if those safety concerns from traffic or parking and that come up, I think those are things that, that we as, as a city should, should look to addressing. So I applaud you for getting together and have, maybe getting a group together. This is how neighborhood associations originally formed. It's usually a, something that comes up and that causes a group of people to get together, and then from there, they're, they just, you know, tackle issues and find solutions. And to me, that the most important thing is that you're looking for solutions, not just complaining about the problems, but also looking how we can make things better. And you guys live there, so you know, you know what, what's needed, you see it, and I appreciate that, you know, maybe now that you, you know who City staff is, that you're gonna be willing to, to talk to them about issues, especially when it comes to safety. But I think that, I just, just quickly, I'll make it real brief. I think that we could've probably avoided this situation, avoided the continuance, and avoided this, had the applicant reached out to the neighborhood prior to coming here, so been more proactive. I don't think, I, that we as a body should have to ask the applicant to meet, I think it should be something that's part of the application process. And I know that maybe in other cities like Los Angeles, it's part of the process, that if they're, I don't know, I don't know what their standards are or rules are, but is there a way that we can incorporate something like this into our application process, so the applicant can meet or go out and reach out to the neighborhood, and maybe so far as bring those people into the meeting with them for, as their support base?
This application was for the alcohol license.
Right.
So it wasn't subject, and the project itself was not large enough to be subject to the Sunshine Ordinance. But that's the purpose of the Sunshine Ordinance. So it's typically, this one kinda fell under our parameters for public involvement, but it's something on a staff level, we can encourage verbally people, if they're in neighborhoods that are predominantly residential, to go out and do.
Okay. I would, I would definitely strongly encourage it, I'd like it to be part of the process, but if it can, be encouraged, because I'll be honest, if this happens again, I'd probably take the same route and, and vote for continuance, which extends and delays, you know, the applicants from moving forward, and I really don't wanna do that if it can be prevented.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this was, you know, at some point, we're going to have conversations with the planning commission about balancing the request of neighbors to have input on everything, and then that, to the extent that it might become more like a ballot or a voting process, that whether or not people do. There is, there is a point where we need to develop a balance and strike a balance between an applicant's right to apply for things that are permitted or conditionally permitted in the zoning code, and they're not unpermitted, and to be able to have a due process that is not extraordinary. And, and typically, consumption of alcohol with, in conjunction with food, is not considered in any city an exacerbating situation. And that may be the reason that the Sunshine Ordinance did not require a neighborhood meeting as a requirement for that particular kind of application, but indeed, it's possible to take a look at the different types of permit processes that we have, discretionary review processes that we have, and see which ones really warrant having a neighborhood meeting. In this case, and then, and on top of that, it's always advisable for staff to identify areas where we think the neighborhood might be sensitive to something, and direct the applicant as, as an advice, that we think you're better off if you have a neighborhood meeting, in this case, because the neighbors are, are, might be sensitive, and that might actually help to your thing. But we do not want it to become necessarily something that every time anybody will have to require, to be required to have a public meeting. It's, it's, you know, there are certain things that meet a threshold, certain things that don't. And that's a conversation to be had at a different time with the planning commission, perhaps.
I agree. I, I do think there needs to be a balance, but at the same time, I've been in Santa Ana all my life, and I remember back in the days growing up, because I was a teenager at the time, when crime rates were high and bars were on every corner, and we did, the city did at the time, fantastic job of closing a lot of those and cleaning them up. And, you know, I don't wanna see us go backwards in any shape or form. I understand food and alcohol, you know, combined, you know, we, we as a body, you know, need to look at those on the case by case, but it's helpful to know when it's in the middle of a neighborhood that they support the project. Thank you.
He did weigh that in. Go ahead. Commissioner Becerra, and then Commissioner Bauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Verino, it didn't sound like you were asking every applicant to hold a actual Sunshine Ordinance meeting. And when you referenced Los Angeles, I, I just recently, in my day job, we just did an application up there, and part of the master land use application is just a sheet in the back, has a couple of lines, and it says optional. It's not saying you must do this, or else you don't get approved, it just says, you know, you may wanna go knock on some doors. And, and to the point that Commissioner Verino made earlier, that might've, you know, prevented a continuance, potentially. Again, I don't want to speak for anybody in the room, but just seeing what, seeing what developed. So I don't think it's a bad thing for us to include that in an application, the way that Commissioner Verino had suggested. I think it's just, it's an additional sheet, you don't have to, again, the language can be very passive, it can say just, you know, go ahead and reach out to your neighbors. I don't think that's a bad idea at all. I think that's something that's not, doesn't have to be mandatory, just something to encourage. And again, it's not triggering Sunshine ordinances, it's not going above and beyond. And I agree with Mr. Agania, we don't wanna put undue burdens on applicants, we don't wanna see them go through, you know, three hundred more hoops and hurdles that don't make sense in any other jurisdiction, but all of a sudden, we're doing it. I think, you know, when we see something that's working in other cities, I mean, even Los Angeles, it's even working there. So I applaud you, Commissioner Verino, in bringing that forward, and I think that would be a fantastic idea, and if staff were to implement, I'd support that.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, I just got one comment, one comment. One of the commentators mentioned she thought this was a bar, and I think that probably that would raise the ire of anyone. I think if they think there's a bar, it's only up next to it. And I don't know if there's something in the form of communication that the city was issuing, because it did notice, there is a notice that is put up. And I don't know if there's something in that communication that let people believe wrong, that it was a bar. Because I mean, I would look at it as they would, if a bar's on up there, I don't want bars, I mean, but it is in fact a restaurant.
Right. I think the public hearing notice did say a sit-down restaurant with food service and alcohol, but, and that's the type of licensing, but sometimes things get read differently when you're, when you're concerned about, when there's a neighborhood concern, so.
It's worthy of reviewing the notices that do go out.
Right.
To address that very concern.
Right.
They're shaking their heads, and there's a lot of people obviously thought it was a bar, so it leads me to believe that perhaps communication wasn't mainly in this stadium.
Perhaps, yes, and so we'll, yeah, we'll have to review that wording and make sure.
If I may, one of the things we're going to add to our notices is a contact person in the planning department, and with people to ask questions. So hopefully, that'll help people find out that, here's a contact name, here's a phone number, you can call and find out more about this, so that hopefully, people will not, if they have, they're not sure, they can always ask.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you wanna add anything? I know you weren't here last, you're good, okay.
I'll, I'll add something here. To kind of address Mr. Chavez a little bit, just to give you a little background where I was coming from last, last meeting. I'm a restaurant architect, and so all I do is design restaurants all day and every day, all over the country. And a typical restaurant has an alcohol license with it, most of them have spirits type forty-seven, Lucille's at the mall, et cetera, and places like that. I also have been in Santa Ana thirty years, and, and started my business here twenty-nine years ago, and worked on Santa Ana Boulevard at the Business Enterprise Center, so I was familiar with the area and Poinsettia and the lumberyard and everything, and there's so many changes that have happened there, and the E-Bell Club, and so I was admittedly very overzealous to see something, a little restaurant, come in the neighborhood. I enjoy those small, privately owned businesses, so, so from a standpoint of my end, I was, I wasn't seen at all as a bar. I was seen it as a restaurant with a liquor license. However, with my fellow commissioners, they felt that the community outreach would be a good idea, and as it turns out, it was. It was a great idea. And as much as I wasn't in love with holding up the show, I have to agree with Commissioner Verino, Commissioner Mill, I guess Commissioner Becerra, whoever was in favor of giving time to the neighborhood, so that you could understand what you were getting. And what you're getting is a compliment to the neighborhood. And from reaching out, now you've become partners with the owner, in a sense, and so you'll be customers. I think you'll find yourselves as customers, they're gonna win, you're gonna win, and, and you'll feel, as you get to know them, if you see things that you don't care for, gives you a great opportunity to say, hey, you know, you know, can we cool this down somehow? And it's, so it's great to be involved, I think that it shows a lot of community spirit, you all went out and rallied the troops, you know, even though, even though at the time, I wasn't thrilled about that, but, but I am thrilled now, and I think you are, too. So I think it's a really good deal for everybody, so if there's not any other comments, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Any further discussion and/or motion? Commissioner Verino.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2015-19.
Second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti absent. Congratulations. Thanks, folks, thanks. Item number three, conditional, public hearing item number three, conditional use permit number 2015-22, and the...
Good evening, chairperson, members of the planning commission. This request in front of you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow a vocational school at 920 North Poinsettia Street. AGC Vocational School is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a trade school in the SDA four zoning district, which is the transit zoning code area. They have a M1 zoning overlay. The site is located in the Burke Business Park, which was developed in 2002, some of you might remember, when this business center, this park was developed. And it is surrounded by the Burke Business Park development, to the east, to the south, and to the north is another industrial use, and to the west is multifamily. This is a view of the project site, which is being well-kept and is in good condition. All the landscapes, it's intact, and the building is being well-maintained since 2002. This is a site plan showing the existing building, which will remain, and it is, it was built as a warehouse, and will remain as a warehouse. The proposed, the proposed project is 11,500 square feet, which is the existing building, that's the way how it was constructed. And this trade school is for vocational training in the construction industry. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., which will only be in the evening hours. It's a very small facility, and they have anywhere from five to twenty students per The proposed vocational school will benefit the community by providing diversified educational opportunities for the businesses and residents in the city of Santa Ana and adjacent communities. This trade school is consistent with the light industrial and manufacturing uses in this area and promote job skill training. The proposed school will be in compliance with Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code and supports several general plan goals and policies. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number 2015-22 as conditioned. And staff is here to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is also present, if you have any questions about the business and the operations.
Do we have any questions for staff? None? Okay, I guess that's not. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Yes, he is.
Hello. My name is Sergio Ortega, and I'm representing AGC Apprenticeship.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Man, this is a quiet crowd. I know we have a couple speaker cards, so we'll have a couple guest speakers come up, and then if there's any other questions, you might be able to come back and answer that.
I think I was one of them, I think I put it.
Oh, are you one of them?
I was now, Sergio.
Oh, yeah, Sergio, okay. So you're done now?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I have another speaker card for Charles Wright.
My name's Charlie Wright. I'm representing Becknell Properties, the owner of the building, and I just wanted to say that we, Sergio and his team are outstanding tenants, and we fully support them.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear. Does anyone in the planning commission have any other questions for the applicant, so you can think of at all? Any other members of the public that may have not filled out a guest card here, request to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and motion and/or a vote. Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2015-22 as conditioned.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bauer. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti absent. Build, build it, do it. Okay. We have administrative matters, however, I think there's a change of plan. Lisa, you sent out a memo of a bylaw, you wanna go over that with everybody here?
Yes, in reviewing the bylaws and for the amendments, we noticed that they were in contradiction of the charter. And Charter Section 900 established the planning commission, as well as the other two original boards of commissions. And Section 904 requires you to have your election in July.
You know, it's interesting, for years and years, it's always seemed like it's not necessarily January, but it seemed like it was April last year, or some, or March? It just flops around, there's a wind.
Not anymore.
Okay, so it's in July?
July. So we'll continue this matter for...
Okay. So the item five, the appointment to planning commission general plan and zoning ordinance advisory subcommittee, is there discussion on that?
No discussion, no, no. We have subcommittees, we're, and Commissioner Noll served on that subcommittee, and now we would like for you to participate in that subcommittee as well. Commissioner McLaughlin.
There you go. He volunteered. That's perfect. We don't even have to vote or anything.
Okay.
Item six, planning commission bylaws amendment.
We went through many of the bylaws, but it's like one of those things, every time you look at it, you see more things to discuss. One of the items, we did give you a clean version of it to read, as well as a strikeout redline version, which showed where the changes were. But one of the items we would like to bring up for your discussion is the item of abstentions. Right now, the way abstentions work is... Right now, the way abstentions work is a member of the commission shall abstain from any, shall not, shall abstain from any vote unless disqualified. So you can't, the idea is that you can't, you have to be, have a conflict of interest as defined by conflict of interest law. There may be occasions where you wish to abstain from an item because of a relationship that you have with an applicant, or a neighbor, or for some reason that may not involve a financial gain on your, on your part, which is, that is what our conflict of interest is based on. But it may be some other reason, which is a valid reason. And so the suggestion here was that we may wish to extend the ability to abstain from an item to the reasons beyond just a pure legal conflict of interest. And just predicated on that you would have to explain what your, why you are abstaining from that item in that particular instance. So that was the one thing that we did want to bring up for your discussion and consideration tonight.
Any, Commissioner Bauer?
May I ask what the standard is the City Council employs in the National Party, uniformed across the commission, whatever the City Council, what's the standard?
They go with the basic legal definition of conflict of interest. Financial, there's a financial gain. Then they also have other conflicts of interest because of their campaign contributions. Right.
I mean, to me, I think we should keep the same standard as City Council. It makes sense what you're explaining. You don't want people, because they're discomforted by a vote, to excuse themselves in abstaining. You want, they can only do it under an objective standard.
Commissioner Mill.
So, for instance, like earlier this evening, when, because we see this all the time before and after your folks will, well, I wasn't here, someone abstained from the minutes. That's not, technically, we don't really need to do that, correct? Or we shouldn't do that, or shouldn't we?
You actually should.
Should not.
You should not.
So even if you weren't here, go ahead and vote on the minutes?
Yes.
Well, luckily, I have that, so. But like with a, okay, so if it's a conflict of interest, then...
Right.
Well, I don't think there's complex of interest when it comes to the minutes. I'm hoping this is geared more towards our judicial actions, not administrative matters.
At the minute, but I mean, conflict of interest and an action.
But technically, we shouldn't be abstaining in that.
That's correct.
Well, no, no, I don't mean against what Commissioner Mill's saying. I think it's a valid question, but I'm amused by the response. I mean, I would think that we would abstain from the minutes if I wasn't here. I'm not going to sit there and say, no, I thought Bruce did say that. If I'm not here, I don't know what he said.
If I may say, at the Historic Resource Commission meeting, which was in November, the new member that joined at that point in time abstained, and it was taken as an abstention.
It's not a legal reason for abstaining. If you, I'm not going to oppose you abstaining today because you're not comfortable voting on the minutes, but that's not a legal reason for abstaining.
Okay, but then it goes back to what you just were talking, what you were just explaining earlier, in that, you know, if, if it's not a conflict of interest, one can still abstain as long as they can explain why they're abstaining.
That's what Canada is explaining, that maybe we want to change Section 8-8, but that's up to you to discuss right now.
And my point isn't to be like, oh, Mark, I'm saying, that's not my point. No, my point is just in the future, because I noticed for years, oh, I'm abstaining. And I was always under the assumption that we didn't need to abstain if we weren't here. I was just wanting to clarify. It wasn't to be like, oh, you know, it wasn't anything particular. I was just using the...
It makes, it still makes sense from my standpoint, because I'm just saying, if you haven't, if you weren't in attendance, really, you don't know what was really discussed, and you're just looking at the minutes and just, you know, I mean, it's no harm, no foul. I mean, it's just like you're walking away and saying, hey, I'm just not going to vote on this.
One of the, one of the other alternatives that commissions do use is the party who does not want to abstain or doesn't want to vote may recuse themselves, and so they leave the room.
But that, that's a true conflict of interest, though.
Well, I mean, no, but they can do that. I have seen that done in other, when they, you know, they just left. But if you...
Well, I think really, the issue is you don't have capacity to vote. I mean, you don't, it's not a legal ground. When he's, he can't vote on it because he doesn't have the legal capacity or the basis to vote. He wasn't present, so how could he possibly vote on that matter? So I don't think you even get to the issue of whether it's an abstention or not. So I mean, we're using language to say, basically, I didn't, I don't have the capacity to vote. And it's not technically an abstention, it's, but it's, it's the same thing.
Right. An absence is different from an abstention. I mean, to actually, if I got up off the dice and walked away, probably not going to come back and vote on something. Or maybe I just don't want to be here part of the item, or I just went home for whatever reason. But I think if we're going to talk about abstentions, like actively sitting here, listening to testimony, and then at the last second going, that's it, I'm not voting. I have a conflict or something, I think that's kind of what we should be focused on, not
And we have to state why, correct? We have to publicly state why we're abstaining.
That's correct.
Right. So going back to what you said, I forget which of my colleagues asked about what the City Council does. So where are their standards laid out? In other words, we've got these bylaws. What, what could we point to, like for the City Attorney's Office? If you're to advise a council member, what would you point to? Would it be state law? Would it be?
Government code.
Government code, okay. So the definition to which they would recuse themselves, that the city would use in advising the council, would be government code?
Government code, political reform.
Okay, okay.
Let me, I'm just, my only comment is that to vote on something that you don't know or didn't participate, it kind of dilutes the responsibility of voting. And that's, it just, to me, if there's two members that are absent from the previous meeting, I just look at it from the standpoint that, you know, okay, they got their notes and everything else, but they didn't hear or understand all of the nuances that surrounded that minutes. So, I mean, if you say you're just abstaining because you weren't there, I mean, it's no harm, no foul, but I think it doesn't dilute from what the process is supposed to be doing.
Mr. Hargani?
Mr. Chair, I've seen it both ways, and I actually understand what Commissioner McLaughlin's saying, because it's counterintuitive to vote on something that you don't feel certain amount. And I believe that's the reason that staff has brought it up to your attention, because technically, he would be forced to vote either way. I mean, it's a matter, in this case, we're talking about just the minutes, but it was another larger item that he may not feel, a commissioner may not feel as comfortable and as well-versed as the rest of the commission, and feel that knowledgeable enough to vote alongside of his or her colleagues, that, you know, then at least that would give you the opportunity to express that and say, for these reasons, I'd rather abstain. And that would, just to expand your possibility. And I also can, I have seen, as Commissioner Bauer said, in other cities, where they simply mimic and the rhythm of the City Council procedures. However, sometimes planning commissioners are dealing with nuances that the City Council members are not. And then for those reasons, and then I have also worked in places in that the commissioner might say that I would like to recuse myself and get up and leave the dais, because there's a perception among my colleagues or among my cohorts of conflict of interest, although there is no real conflict of interest. So we simply want to give you the opportunity to make that decision for yourselves. And I think that's the reason that staff is bringing it up. We don't really prefer one way or another. It's really, in the end, obviously up to you.
Mr. Chair, it sounds like from here, and just reading what staff has proposed to us, we would just want to define what disqualified means. So maybe it's a simple saying disqualified per government code, section, whatever Lisa provides, and call it a day.
Staff wants to give you the opportunity to go beyond that limited, narrow view of the government code, so that if you have another reason that you think is legitimate for you not to participate, you have that option. It's just simply about that.
The government code requires you to state a conflict of, have a conflict of interest, which means that in some way, you have some sort of financial gain through it.
I don't think that's a bad thing, but...
You have to do that. You have to do that on, on any item. But if there was some other reason, like you were not well-informed on an item, and you would like to abstain on it, this would give you, rewording it, would give you that option.
Any further discussion, or you still have more presentation on this item? Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, as far as overall on the, on the draft, I have quite a few questions on it. So I mean, but are we, I guess, what's the procedure right now? Are we, are you to the point of a motion?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm not, I don't believe it's a resolution. Well, recommended action, adopt a resolution. So if there's additional questions, then now's the time.
All right, well, one, all right, so thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, one thing, throw out to my colleagues. We, a few of us that were here at the last meeting had discussed the notion of possibly moving the meetings to Tuesday nights, just to be consistent with council. Just to have it all fall in line, just so that, kind of in the thinking that I understood that City Council had was, once we receive our agenda packets, the idea would be that as we review them, we come back on Monday with questions that would give staff time to find the answers, as opposed to having to do it the same day that commission's happening. And I think there was some discussion, but at the time, there was only three of us here, I think, three of us plus a phone call. So I wanted to throw that out to everybody for discussion as well.
Staff did research that, and we found that there were a number, we have a number of difficulties with accommodating that request. The first was we would not have a recording secretary. Also, there are standing reservations in place for the council chambers during the rest of the weekdays, and the second and the fourth Mondays do work best for the clerk of the council. So that was, that was our direction when we, when we made the inquiry. One of the things that we would like to suggest, and we understand that you are feeling frustrated about not having packets on time to review them, or to contact staff and ask questions. And so, starting with the next meeting that we have coming up, we will be delivering the packets electronically on the Tuesday, before the meeting, Tuesday evening, and then they'll be delivered in hard copy on the Wednesday following the meeting. So that was...
You have it prior to the meeting?
Oh, excuse me, prior to the meeting, yes. The Wednesday following Tuesday, yes.
So Tuesday electronic and Wednesday hard copy.
That's correct.
And I've actually liked electronics, I go through that before I even get the other one.
So hopefully, that will help us solve some of the issues that we have, even though we can't move the time at this point and still meet in the council chambers.
I think that solves, solves kind of a lot of the issues that we have raised.
Yeah, because of alternate Fridays.
And I had spoken with Bassar about that, he said, would I get it too early? So I was kind of, I didn't have a chance to go with that, but I think that's the time issues that Commissioner Bassar and I were concerned about. We're bombarding you on Monday afternoon, and we're going to be here in two hours. We have a Tuesday, it gives us Wednesday, Thursday, and most weeks Fridays. So I think that, that works.
Much better. I know Monday's really, I just, I thought about it too, Commissioner Bassar's idea. And as it turns out, I'm, it seems like Monday just personally works better for me. I don't know about the other commissioners, but it seems like, it's a tough day to make all your slices. It seems like a lot of people aren't traveling on Monday, and, you know, so, I guess it has to stay Monday anyway, so it's kind of moot point, what we think.
Okay, I, yeah, and...
You have other items?
Couple of items I had, just going through my notes. On 1D, as to each matter before the commission, let's see. Oh, I'm sorry, it was 1E, any decision or ruling of the chairperson. I guess I was kind of confused. No disrespect to our chairperson, but rulings of the chairperson? What, what does that mean?
Maybe it has to do with people's, guest speakers talking past the red light, or...
Well, no, but I mean, is, again, just for clarity purposes, is that considered a ruling?
The chairperson has the ability to change the order of agenda. They have the ability to propose alterations, I believe.
No, I understand the role of the chairperson, I'm just concerned about the word ruling. In other words, like I feel like the commission, and I don't even like the word ruling, but I guess...
There are a number of places in the guidelines where it talks about the chairperson. The chairperson may say, your, your three minutes are up. Please conclude your, conclude, conclude your statement. If you were, if you were concerned that you hadn't heard everything that the applicant had said, you could say, excuse me, chairperson, but can we please extend this person's three-minute
Time limit.
Allowance to be able to speak, to conclude his thoughts.
No, no, I get all that. I think, again, I'm just, it's a very narrowly focused, well, it's not a like or dislike, it's just trying to understand what that means, that's all. I think we're answering the secret of life. I just really was...
Yes, that's a ruling.
Okay.
It's a decision.
Okay.
Ruling.
Let's see. Oh, 3E, the chairperson may at his or her discretion encourage the proponents and opponents of any matter to organize into spokesperson groups in the interests of expediency and to avoid repetition. And then it says, however, no person desiring to speak shall be denied the right to do so. Kind of seems like a redundant thing. I think that if a group of people walked up to the podium and, you know, they kind of said, okay, this one person's going to speak, I don't really know if that's something that we would try to control from here, or the chairperson would control from here.
Well, if you had a group of 50 people out there, and they all want to say exactly the same thing, which we've had happen, in the interest of not rehearing the same thing by 50 people, I believe at one time, it may not necessarily have been me, but I have heard the, hey, if there's 10 folks out there that want to say the same statement, please, you know, maybe just say so, say, hey, ditto, you know, I want to say the same thing. Instead of reading, because we've had people go, we've had a few hearings where they're going way past the red light, way, you know, and it's, and then that, I think that's the idea, interest of expediency, it's not to cut someone off, obviously.
No, no, no.
Or not let them say anything.
But that's where I, I guess I was a little confused on this particular paragraph, because it talks about expediency, and then all senses, but by the way, that can all still be undone. You know what I mean? So it just kind of seems like you could do it, in other words, these bylaws should be, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do. This is kind of more of a suggestive of, you know, by the way, you guys can do this, but you really don't have to. And that's, I don't know if it's, this is the place for it in this document? It's not like the public typically is looking at our bylaws and saying, okay, when we get to the Planning Commission meeting, based on the bylaws, this is what we're going to do. In fact, I'm reading in this section that we should possibly look at doing spokesperson groups. I mean, I just, again, I, it's not something that I'm going to vote no on the whole thing because of this paragraph. It just seemed like something that, it just...
I think it's just the idea that the chair, whoever that is, has the ability to run the meeting and, and try to avoid redundancy. For example, a planning commissioner comments that are off, that are on agenda items, it's not supposed to be agenda item. The chairperson might remind that, you know, you're supposed to, so I think it's a guideline to expedite the, I don't think we've had, we have rare occasion to have to really kick that in. I think when you have a big ruckus of a crowd, you know?
Yeah.
Because it is, you know, we've had, we've had a couple items that I kind of wish I had reeled in the crowd in.
Right. Well, my only other one on this would be, let me make sure, on number 12, under temporary standing committees, you know, the Planning Commission is empowered by two things, the charter and municipal code. And so with the, the memo that we received from Mr. Stork, obviously cites the Planning Commission's, where the Planning Commission is in the charter, in Section 900. But there are a couple of the municipal sections... But there are a couple of the municipal sections under chapter two that kind of address some of this stuff. I think it was, was it two, I forget which one it is. But basically, as far as committees, you know, it, it empowers the chair or the commission to have committees, you know, whenever we see fit. For some reason, I don't know, car wash has become the big thing. I mean, we have the power, or the chair does, I believe, to organize a three-person car wash committee.
And I'll take, I'll take charge of that.
Right, so there you go. So, I mean, I, I mean, to me, it's, these are great suggestions. I mean, and we are right now currently organized under this general planning zoning and the urban design architectural review. And I want to compliment staff, because I don't think we took advantage or even exercised the idea of organizing into any sort of committees. But with that being said, I don't know if it's appropriate to put that in here, as it might be in conflict with some of the sections of the municipal code. Because there's a couple of things in here where it talks about, you know, for instance, review of the capital improvement plans. I mean, we do that every year. I don't think there's ever been a stink about it, but I know that, I think that was scratched out in the bylaws. And there's a couple of other things, but, I mean, unless we're, I mean, because we're, we're trying to do a good job of being consistent with the charter, I just hope that we're also doing that with municipal code.
I think there are some municipal codes, like, sections that we're going to have to revise as well.
Okay, so you're saying then that, once we revise these, you guys are going to come back and revise the municipal code?
For both this commission and for the historic resources commission.
Okay. Okay. So, so then, so then, just so I'm clear then, we're going to amend these bylaws tonight, and then at some point in the future, you guys are going to come back to us with proposals to, or no, would you guys even come to us? It's either come through us and go to council, or just go to council, or what?
These sections in the municipal code would have to be by ordinance, so that would go to city council.
But it wouldn't come to us, then?
It wouldn't unless you want, same, but they're not in chapter 41.
That's right, okay, okay.
I mean, you're, you're good now? I mean, any other questions, though? No, okay. Commissioner Bauer, okay. Commissioner Mill? Commissioner Reno? Okay, so we can bring that to, a motion to, for this?
I made a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the planning commission bylaws.
May I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Bauer's second, or is that Commissioner? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, yes. Pardon me? It was Commissioner Bauer, wasn't it, for the second? Or was it Commissioner McLaughlin? You guys kind of barked it out at the same, I mean, echoed it out at the same time. We'll give it to Commissioner McLaughlin. He's in the gun, and he, he probably said it quicker.
Yeah, I don't get blamed for that one, but that's okay.
All right, good. So we have a motion, a second, and we have already taken a vote. So it's unanimous with Commissioner Alderetti absent. That's the end of the business calendar. Now we have the excused absences.
Move that we excuse Commissioner Alderetti?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Of course, Commissioner Alderetti is absent. So we have planning manager updates.
Yes, we have planning manager updates. One of the things that I, you directed us to come back to you on, in January, and I don't have it with me tonight, but I will have it on February, is street whitemings. You wanted us to look into and give you an, an overview of the street whitemings that were going to be coming down in the next year. So, I do have that information, but I do not have it for you tonight. Another issue that did come up last week is Commissioner Basara asked us to look into modifying our agenda, so that included, right now, we have things that are coming up on the next agenda. And providing you with a spreadsheet of all the project applications that we have, and putting them in a detailed format. That's not something that our staff at this time has time to keep up and administer and, and deal with online. But what we do have, and what we have invested time and energy into, is we have a map online that shows the projects that are upcoming. And you can click on it, you can see the individual projects on the map, where they're located, and it tells you what those projects are. We don't do it for very small projects, like, we probably wouldn't have done it for a liquor license, although I think in the future, we may do it if they're in residential neighborhoods. That may be something that we might want to do. But it, we feel like it does serve our community well, because it's something they can visually see, and they can see where things are. So that is not something that we're going to be able to address right now with the staff limitations that we do have. The other item that I had, I did want to bring up is, I think Karen has contacted most of you now about the subcommittee meetings, and we do want to meet in February. So please get back to her so that we can, so that we can.
We kind of went amongst ourselves, if I can speak for the three of us here, at least for the architectural one. We felt a Monday, opposing Monday for our, at 4:30 time slot would work for us, end of day, 4:30. So, that's good for all of us, because we can all then kind of end the day. Because the middle of the day is probably tough for me to somehow make it to lunch, and you're from your work, and you're, so really, end of day, you can kind of, you know, you're basically making that a meeting time.
All right.
So we could get down to, leave our offices by 4:15, get over here at 4:30, or wherever we decide to meet. As a matter of fact, I guess we don't have to meet, we do typically meet at the city home, right? Wouldn't have to, you can meet at my office if you want.
Yes, well.
Anybody's office.
I think it's.
If I may, for the sake of having the materials ready and accessible, it's best to meet at our conference room.
Perfect.
Right.
Yeah, because you have all the stuff there. That's why a lunchtime meeting, I didn't know how that would work. So I think that 4:30, all of the three of us were, had emails going around, so. So that, there's the answer.
Thank you, thank you. Because we do have an item we want to bring before you.
All right.
Both groups, actually.
And then, those meetings, are they going to be once a month or twice a month?
They'll be once a month, but each of the committees will meet once a month. So it would be alternating weeks, hopefully. That would.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, all three of us can make it every time. If not, then, it's not like you need a quorum necessarily, but, but, okay.
No.
That'll be good.
Thank you.
It's not a quorum, however, we will take the commissioner's input seriously in that meeting to then use those inputs to direct the applicant to improve their projects. Of course, you will be aided by, hopefully, as soon as we get through our selection process and hire someone, a senior urban designer who will also work on that committee with the three commissioners to really carry out the discussion with the applicant. Between the time that the applicant meets with that subcommittee and the time they come to the planning commission, hopefully, we will have some consistency that the planning commission can then support as a whole the direction that their colleagues gave the applicant at the previous time.
I think that's a, yeah, it's a good idea.
So when do you think you'll have idea, Karen, about the other group?
For the other group, it sounds like early morning sounds great. I have not gauged Mark McLaughlin until his suggested appointment, so we're looking at then the alternate Monday, early morning meeting, according to the email feedback we got at the end of the day.
5:00 AM.
Not that early.
I bet that was driven by Commissioner Mill, early stuff. There he is.
I work in, I'll come anytime, you know, I'm, I'm in the city all day long.
What time, what time is it going to be? Monday morning, when?
Probably eight, yeah.
That's up to your decision, I would think, either 7:30 or 8:00 AM. Actually, 8:00 AM sounds great for everyone to be on board, but it's up to you. We can do as early as 7:30.
Who, who is included in that?
That would be Commissioner Basara, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Mill, and yourself.
So you get to wake up with me, Mark.
It's going to be the 18th. Or maybe we're the 18th. That's breakfast. That's breakfast, okay. Design Review Committee is the 18th, I don't know, we'll see.
All right, I guess we'll get back to you, I guess. See if Mark can wake up or not.
Any other updates?
No, that's it, thank you.
Anything else from this, Hassan, nothing more? All right, planning commission member comments, Commissioner Basara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to what our planning manager discussed, the project list, I, I guess I'm a little confused. So, so when applicants come in, we don't input the applications digitally? We don't really track dates, we just kind of, you know, hope we see when they come?
We do, but.
Very organic, because that's the only reason I could see.
No, we have a very strange computer system, which was designed for us. It does not, it, it's a very difficult thing to operate. It's called, it was designed for the city, by the city. And for us to modify it, to give you what the kind of report that you're talking about, that would, would require time and energy and staff and consultant time, who, the consultants that we pay to operate the system. The city does not want to invest additional money into the system, because we have hired a new IT person who is going to then change the system so that we can have its, have these reports and, probably using a different kind of program entirely. So, at this time, we don't have the staff to be able to provide you with the kind of report that you're talking about.
If I may add to this, I, I think the question that Commissioner Basara is asking, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that there is an assumption that it's very easy to just go into the system and ask for a report of such, and print it, and, it's not like that. It requires hours of staff time to sit down and pull files together and prove it, to do this, or we have to invest the time and the money to ask the consultant to modify a program to do this. And as, as the planning manager said, we decided, just actually upon my arrival, that the, this system is really not going to serve our functions. The kind of reporting that you've asked for are completely commonplace and doable once you have the right permitting system, which we don't have at this moment.
What's our estimated time that we would have this system?
Well, you know, the, we, we just know that they, they just confirmed the new IT director position, the person who was hired, I think he's starting on February 1st. And once he gets started, believe me, I have a long list of our, the IT needs, and on top of that is a permitting system. But that one, I can tell you, even if they put it on the top of the agenda, it takes two to three years to launch. It's a big, big, big process. So we will, we'll keep you informed as we go forward, yes.
At the very least, I mean, because it seemed like a headache to, I, I would like to at least have a month. I mean, how about that, a month lag time, just to, to know when things are coming down the pipeline. I mean, especially with some of the projects that we have come before us, where, you know, obviously, some people are asking questions they don't know. It just, any sort of way that we can get the information out to folks. And, you know, there's, I know we send out hearing notices, I know we do certain things, but anything that we can do to avoid situations like what we had, you know, with knife and fork, or knife and.
Well, we have the future agenda items. Right now, we're doing one meeting.
Can we do two? I mean, is that, is that really going to?
We could probably do two, we could probably do two, because, but, the thing is, sometimes they change.
Yeah, with the understanding that they will be changing.
That, that's fine, it's just the idea.
It's not a commitment.
If it's on the agenda, it's an application that's been deemed complete, it's something that eventually is supposed to come to us.
Into, yes, in, in two meetings.
That's the idea, just understanding, having it on there, just knowing, you know, and, and please be a little more specific, not just wireless facility, but like, I like the whole wireless facility at, you know, the address. I mean, just to have it a little ambiguous, kind of, I think provokes more questions, as opposed to go, oh, okay, this is what's coming up on the agenda for the next couple of meetings. And that probably would satisfy a lot of us as far as questions.
As far as the, the amount of information that goes on this, I think what we will suffice to the kind of title that we would put on the, on the regular agenda, we'll just put that.
Perfect, awesome. And then, the other thing is, I wanted to echo what we talked about earlier, and I'm not talking about an agenda.
Not agenda items.
Talking about something that came out of that discussion, which is the idea of the signature sheet. I think that is something I would love to see on the applications, just a sheet in the back that just suggests to applicants to, you know, knock on doors and get signatures. It's not a ballot, it's not saying that if you don't do this, you're not going to get approved, but I think it, from what it sounded like from the last item, it would just give some folks up here some comfort, knowing that they at least did some outreach to the community. We're not talking full-blown sunshine ordinance committee meetings, or community meetings, excuse me, but just something that just says, hey, you know, you may want to think about doing this. I mean, other cities do it. I hope that doesn't involve this intricate permit system.
No, it doesn't. But, again, I have another response to that. Right now, we're going through and looking at our development review process. And so, we're doing a fair, and that's one of the, one of the reasons that you're, we're really reactivating these committees. And, and so we are going to be looking at how we process projects, and that may very well involve changing our applications that, you know, modifying our applications. It may well, it may change some timing, it may change a lot of things. And if, if we can incorporate that into that process, which will be taking the next probably three or four months, we're going to be working on that.
I mean, if you need the help, I'll do it. I swear. I can get on Excel, I've, I've done enough Excel spreadsheets, I'll do it for you. I just, again, if it's something that we can just add to the back of the existing application, I don't think we need to have a full-blown vetting process just to do that.
No, but we want to do one application, and I think it's just as easy for staff members to say, excuse me, but you're an alcohol user in a residential neighborhood, it might be a good idea for you to. We meet with the applicants as they, I mean, as you know, we have pre-application meetings before we accept any application. We sit with the applicant, we go through their materials, we tell, we tell them, you know, if they need additional information, or if they don't. And at that time, it would be fairly simple for us to do that without having to modify our application. So, that would be.
Like an easy fix, I, I just, it's, it's amazing how much resistance I get on some of these things.
Commissioner Basara, I'm going to, I'm going to do that chairperson thing and cut you off. I think we're getting into a discussion item now, instead of a comment. I always think of, maybe it's just my misreading of what comments are, but it seems like we're almost into a lengthy discussion. Maybe you could itemize it in an email, and share it with all of us.
So I, one last thing I wanted to bring up was, this morning, OCTA had their public hearing on the bus cuts, and we had a very significant turnout. We had over 75 people in attendance. South Orange County is going to have some, there's proposals to have significant cuts in South Orange County. But just from my gauge of the situation, it looked like there was a lot of folks from Santa Ana that came out, and it was really nice just to see folks that were concerned and interested in what this county body would do to impact their communities. So, there's my comment, thank you.
Beautiful. Commissioner Reno?
I just wanted to welcome Commissioner McLaughlin to the Dyson, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mill?
Wanted to commend staff on the scoping meeting that we had at the train station with the business owners in regards to the general plan. Great meeting. Hassan and, and I were talking about how engaged the business community is here. It was a lot of good feedback. I think it was good, a good, good meeting with a lot of good information, a lot of, and it was interesting how you have room, so many diverse people, but they came back, and most of the issues that they brought forward were almost identical. And they came from all different areas of town. So I want to commend you guys for putting that together, and it was very well attended, very good. I'd say, well, I want to welcome, Commissioner, I want to welcome him up here, because he's here every week anyway, so you might as well sit up here, so it's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim?
Thank you. Commissioner Mill? Commissioner McLaughlin?
Thank you, I appreciate everybody's well wishes, and it's actually a better view from here than it is from back in the, back of the room.
They like the view down there.
There you go, there you go.
People's company.
Yeah, thank you for, I appreciate it, and look forward to working with everybody.
Commissioner Bauer? Commissioner Bauer?
I too wanted to welcome Commissioner McLaughlin. I know we've sometimes publicly disagreed on some issues of import, but I look forward to working with you on issues, other issues of import to the city.
Welcome Commissioner McLaughlin as well, and the beauty of having seven commissioners is that's why we're, have seven of us, so it's, sometimes we agree to disagree is okay. And it's, I think sometimes those disagreements also bring about good projects at the end of the day, so it's all good. With that being said, the meeting's adjourned.